All right, good evening. I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to order, and we'll start with a moment of silence, then we'll turn to pledge of allegiance. So if you join me in a moment of silence. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next we'll have roll call.
Commissioner Moody?
Present.
Commissioner Jones?
Here.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Present.
Commissioner Repart?
Here.
Commissioner Asasi?
Present.
Mayor Bliss.
Yes, and commissioners, can I get a motion to excuse Commissioner Lanier?
Moved.
Support. Moved and supported. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, next I'll go ahead and take a moment to introduce our interpreter that we have tonight. So if you need assistance with translation services, you are welcome to ask for it. Hi, welcome.
Hi, thank you. Good evening. We are pleased to provide Spanish interpretation services this evening. This includes interpretation during the meeting and for those who want to provide public comment.
Thank you. All right, before we get to the first opportunity for public comment, I want to welcome you to the city commission meeting. For those of you here for the first time, I'd like to walk through our agenda and process, as we want to do everything we can possible to ensure that people have an opportunity to speak, and they have an opportunity to speak without being interrupted. So this is an official city meeting with city business to be conducted. We'll start the meeting with an opportunity to comment on specific action items that we're voting on tonight, and then we'll move through a number of action items. We do have one scheduled public hearing tonight, and that is specific to the Lake St. Jude Drainage Special Assessment. So if you are here tonight to be heard on that item, I'm going to ask you to stay put until I open up that public hearing. And then again, that is specifically for people who are being assessed, who wish to be heard on that item. If you are here to speak on other issues, we'll have public comment at the end. For public comment, we have a number of meeting procedures and expectations. We ask that you come to this podium right up here, share your name and the city that you live in, and you'll be provided with up to three minutes to speak. Again, we want to ensure that this is a safe place for everyone, and we ask that you refrain from clapping, cheering, booing, using profanity, vulgar language, threats, name-calling, or making derogatory comments. If you use profanity or vulgarity, or engage in threatening language, the microphone will be shut off for the duration of the time. If there is continued disrupted actions or a breach of the peace, I will ask the individual or the individuals to stop, and if they continue, they will be asked to leave. So public comment is an opportunity for all voices to be heard, despite whether those in attendance, or those of us elected, agree or disagree with what is being said. People have a right to speak without being screamed at, or criticized, or disrupted, especially by others in attendance. And despite our own opinion, or personal beliefs, or values, people have a right to come and speak on whatever topic they wish, and that includes their religious beliefs, whatever those religious beliefs may be. So again, I want to remind everyone that this meeting is a lawful assembly of a governmental body, and disrupting the order of this meeting is committing a breach of peace. So with that, we'll open up the first opportunity for public comment. This is specific to action items or agenda items that we're voting on tonight. For this item, we ask that you share your name, the city that you live in, and if you can be explicit about what action item you're referring to, so you can say Committee of the Whole Number Two, or Community Development Number Three, but please let us know what action item that we're voting on tonight you wish to speak to.
Hello, my name is Emma. I'm speaking on several action items, sourcing from the Fiscal Committee, Committee on the Whole, and Public Safety Committee. So I have an English degree, which helps me read and interpret data, and also a social science degree, which helps me to understand how to use that data to implement interventions for both clients and the general community. The public has frequently come up to you with their expertise on their own experience. And so my question is, why aren't you using a better data model to source from the actual accurate data, which is the community's voice, to implement change? The reason I know that that's not happening is because of the actions being taken.
Emma, can you please be specific about what action item?
Yes, I did. I spoke about this from the Fiscal Committee, but I'm speaking about a ton of them. So specifically...
Do you have a number?
A number? I'm speaking on a ton of them. You only give me three minutes, so I'm speaking on as many as I can. If I could speak on all of them, I would have come up here for every single one. Speaking about the fact that only, and I did, I added up everything, only about, since April 2022, in the travel report, only about 30,000 has been spent on community investments, from in the period of May 11th to June 7th, only about 270,000. And then for today's items, many of which, there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, about 520,000 being spent on things that have to do with housing, healthcare, primarily, primarily it was housing and employment assistance. Compared to the policing budget, which, again, let's compare 30,000 to almost 300,000 in the period from April 2022, and almost 900,000, 869,000 in the other period from 5/11 to 6/7. I really want to make a point about one specific item, and that since only about a month ago, a little over a month, there was a need to spend almost $25,000 on ammunition. How many bullets by the police are being used if you need that much more ammunition, especially in the wake of a murder? That's completely unacceptable. And then, non-community essential needs, which didn't really, which would be, anything that doesn't address community essential needs, isn't addressing city physical maintenance or staffing expenses, that was also a huge portion of the budget, 728,000 for today's items, 867 from the period of 5/11 to 6/7, and 56,000 since April 2022. Which, okay, so we understand where the priorities lie. And I only have four seconds, which is why I would have wanted to speak on every single action item. Thank you for wasting my time on those couple seconds.
Others wish to be heard? And again, this is on action items, or items we're voting on. And please be explicit about what item you're speaking to.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor Bliss, and commissioners. I didn't get a chance to speak last time, but I wanted to thank Second Ward Commissioner Jones for the job you did before the last meeting. Okay, appreciate that very much. I want to be speaking about the fiscal, the fiscal issue.
Okay, what fiscal item that is before us tonight that we're voting on, do you want to speak to?
Well, I wanted to speak last time.
Okay, but you'll have to wait till public comment, unless it's something we're voting on tonight. So I'm going to ask you to take a seat, and you can wait till regular public comment period.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Thanks. All right, anyone else wish to speak on action items? Hi, welcome.
Hello, my name is Shannon Tanis, and I'm from the First Ward. I will be speaking on Community Development Committee, item number seven, the seven properties a tax court closed on. I spoke to the treasurer today, and I inquired if there was anyone living in these properties. And he said there was only one, and that he's working with that individual to finish that process. But my concern is, if we've exhausted all avenues through the judicial process, and through the city, and at last resort, if someone's facing crisis-ness of homelessness, I would ask your CLC people to connect with the treasury and the judicial department, to plug them into the system, so that way, if they have no other avenue, that they can get plugged in that crisis shelter need, and into the HMIS system. I don't know if that needs to be laid off the table to further look at that, but that's what I'm presenting to you. So, thank you.
Thank you. We'll follow up on that property. All right, I'm going to close that public comment period, and we'll move to approval of the minutes. All right, commissioners, can I get a motion for approval of the minutes from our meeting on May 24th?
To move.
Support. All right, moved and supported. Any questions or comments? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, next that will take us to petitions and communications.
The first one? First one is communications received regarding accountability to the Grand Rapids Committee, Committee and Patrick Leoya.
That is received and filed.
Communications received regarding justice for Patrick Leoya.
That is received and filed.
Communication from Kimberly Vendrell regarding their resignation from the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board.
That is referred to our Committee on Appointments.
And then a communication received from Kelsey Purdue Grand Rapids Community Relations Commission Chair regarding banning conversion therapy in the city of Grand Rapids.
And that is received and filed. All right, commissioners, that will take us to reports of city officers.
The first one is the Controlls Report for the period of June 21, 2022, in the amount of $35,806,157.09.
That is received and filed.
And the Treasurer's Report for the period of May 25, 2022 through June 10, 2022.
That is received and filed.
And finally, the city clerk submitted copies of the Police and Fire Retirement System actuarial valuation for the year ending December 31, 2021.
And that is also received and filed. All right, next that will take us to our consent agenda. Commissioners, or those in attendance, our consent agenda, our items that we voted on earlier today, where there was a unanimous vote. So tonight with one voice vote, we'll adopt those items. Commissioners, can I get a motion for the consent agenda?
Move.
Port.
All right, moved and supported. Commissioners, any questions or comments? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, that will take us to ordinances to be adopted. And tonight, we have a number of city ordinances. We have four. We'll start with the first one.
The first one is the ordinance amending Section 3 of Ordinance 2019-68, classification title update, Court Operator.
All right, can I get a motion?
Move.
Port.
All right, moved and supported. Commissioner Asasi, you want to tell us about this item?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is a title and job description for what was before the senior judicial clerk, and in 2020, and 2020 was updated due to succession planning. After some time and after review of the title and management, the union met and agreed to modify this job description to include a certified electronic operator requirement, as well as some other additional duties. And because of all of that, it's recommended and agreed to that the best appropriate title would be Court Operator. There is no fiscal change to the pay status or level, and then anyone who's an incumbent in this role will be reclassified to this new position. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioners, any questions or comments? All right, this is a roll call vote tonight.
Commissioner Repart?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Yes.
Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Commissioner Asasi?
Yes.
Mayor Bliss.
Yes, it carries. All right, that'll take us to our second ordinance to be adopted tonight.
Salary ordinance amendment for non-representative management employees of the 61st District Court, new classification.
All right, can I get a motion?
To move.
Port.
All right, moved and supported. Commissioner Moody, you want to tell us about this?
Yes, ma'am. This new classification is of a eviction prevention holistic facilitator, which has been created to be funded through a program, which is the National Center for the State Courts, as part of the eviction division initiative. This grant will be used to be a holistic, sustainable management of program that would have utilized landlords' and tenants' division. The ultimate goal of this work is to bring together and to prevent homelessness and to preserve tenancy. This does have a new salary increase, which ranges from 61,000 to 78,000.
All right, thanks, Commissioner. Commissioners, any questions or comments? All right, this is also a roll call vote tonight.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Yes.
Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Commissioner Asasi?
Yes.
Commissioner Repart?
Yes.
Mayor Bliss.
Yes, it carries. All right, that will take us to our third ordinance to be adopted tonight.
This is an ordinance amending Section 1 of the Budget Ordinance 2021-13 for fiscal year 2022.
To move.
Support.
All right, moved and supported. Commissioner O'Connor, from our Fiscal Committee, you want to tell us about this item?
There are seven items tonight. First item is recognizing some additional tax increment financing for our brownfield funds, in the amount of $1.3 million. Second item is related to our golf course. Second time here recently, we've appropriated additional revenue due to increased players at the golf course. Number three is $750,000 expenditure due to increased costs for our motor equipment fund, due to rising fuel costs, supplies, and vehicle repairs. Item four is an expenditure for the rotor milling and resurfacing of Hall Street, as well as appropriate, or receiving some share project, as the streets does border the city of East Grand Rapids, so we worked on that together. Item five, Engineering Department, is the reconstruction of College Avenue for $1.4 million. Item six is some ARPA-funded sidewalk improvements along Collindale Avenue. And item seven, for the 61st District Court, we received some additional grant funding for the eviction diversion program.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioners, any questions or comments? All right, this is a roll call vote tonight.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Yes.
Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Commissioner Asasi?
Yes.
Commissioner Repart?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Mayor Bliss.
Yes, it carries. And commissioners, can I get a motion to give this immediate effect?
Move.
Port.
All right, moved and supported. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, that will take us to our fourth ordinance to be adopted tonight.
This is the ordinance correcting a zoning ordinance text amendment, allowing for the reduction of residential lot with requirements, eliminating duplicate of text in sections, Section 5.2.05.D.3.a, and correcting section references.
All right, thank you. Can I get a motion?
Support.
Moved and supported. Commissioner Repart, you want to tell us about this?
Yes, so this is simply a cleanup of a duplicated section in the ordinance that we passed, and so it just strikes that duplication, and then it returns all of the page numbers and references in the correct place.
All right, thank you. And this is a roll call vote tonight.
Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Commissioner Asasi?
Yes.
Commissioner Repart?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Yes.
Mayor Bliss.
Yes, it carries. All right, that will take us to our scheduled public hearing. And again, this is a public hearing to consider the Lake St. Jude Drainage Improvement Special Assessment District Number 8770. So what we'll do tonight, we will start this off with our city engineer, Mr. Berkman, to tell us about this item. And then this public hearing is specific for those of you who are in this special assessment district, who wish to be heard tonight. So we'll start with Mr. Berkman, our city engineer. We'll allow city commissioners to ask any questions they may have, and then I'll open it up for public comment on this specific item. Go ahead, Mr. Berkman.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening. So here tonight to talk about the Lake St. Jude Drainage District, the proposed district, where flooding's been occurring on certain properties located on the Waterford Court and Parkway Drive areas for decades. In fact, city has photo documentation dating back to 1974 of this occurring. So since 2009, however, when flooding occurs, city staff have set up a temporary measure by which a pump is carried out to the rear yards, and hoses are set to kind of draw down the water. And we first studied this drainage area in 2009 and prepared an engineering report looking at alternatives and costs, met with residents in the area at that time to discuss the alternatives. Moving ahead to October of 2019, 18 owners did petition the city for us to look at this, at this, at these improvements to be made, and conduct this investigation. So we again reviewed those alternatives and updated the costs from that original report in 2009. So the proposed design that is up for consideration would build a gravity storm So the proposed design that is up for consideration would build a gravity storm sewer about 650 feet in length from the east end of Parkway Drive to Eastern Avenue where it will connect into a county drain that ultimately discharges to the Grand River. If and when the storm sewer is installed and it connects to that Wells drain, which is under the jurisdiction of the Kent County Drain Commissioner, the city would then take over jurisdiction of that county drain. So estimated cost of the work is at $639,560. The city's share would be $238,430. The balance of that $401,000 would be spread across the 123 property owners in the proposed district. So an information letter has been sent out to the property owners as well as notice of this public hearing. It's been posted. And also, there was a public information meeting held on May 12. Written communications have been received by some who were unable to make it tonight that have been shared with you by our office. And there's also been vote cards of the 123 that have been sent out. We've received six that are voting yes, 51 that have voted no, and 66 yet to respond. And so with that, I will hand it back over to you for the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Berkman. Commissioners, any questions or comments? Commissioner Asasi?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Berkman. I'll thank you for, I just want to say thank you to Mr. Mark Garvey and your department, I believe, if I'm getting his name right, for fielding a number of emails that I received in the last couple of weeks for individuals who felt they couldn't be here but wanted to make sure that their position on the assessment was noted. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. All right. Thank you. All right. So if you are here to be heard on this specific public hearing, you're welcome to come forward. We ask that you share your name, and if you want to share your address, where you are in this district, and you'll be given up to three minutes to speak.
Hi, I am Courtney Merrick, and I am at the address of 3543 Williamson Avenue. It is the farthest outpost. I work for a watershed organization in Grand Rapids. I work with stormwater all the time, and I'm for putting in stormwater infrastructure and green infrastructure in this area. However, the property I am looking at, I, when I'm there, I can see the rain events. There's no storm drains directly where we're at. It's off to the left if you're looking at the, or, yeah, at the house, and there's one off to the right. Neither of those storm drains directly are in front of the house, and the water doesn't seem to be pulling down to the downspout, which is the downfall by the drainage area. In that area, there's really bad flooding. It is terrible. Those people's, like, backyards are gone. But there's a lot of people on the houses that drainage doesn't seem to be going that way. And looking at the topology, the house that I'm at, it's at the top of a hill, so it's kind of on the borderline anyway. It just, there needs to be help in that area. It's just, I don't think fair to put everybody into it if they're draining. It doesn't seem to be a large portion of it. And the churches both there have an outrageous amount of open space that don't have anything in it. It's turf grass and parking lots. And as we know, turf grass is basically a parking lot. They improve, like, there's no imperviousness. You don't have any drainage there. It doesn't do anything, and there's just giant open fields. So if there could be more done on those properties as well, instead of putting the burden on a lot of the neighbors who are there, I understand turf grass and lawns are horrible. It's just, it's an overall bad situation, and we're doing a lot of amendments to these areas. There are legacy problems, but just trying to do as much in that area as possible and not necessarily putting it on the far end, especially since a lot of those people's backyards, which is the most of their property anyway, don't even drain that way. They're going downhill into the other areas. So, that's it for me. Thank you.
Hi, welcome.
Hello. I'm Pamela Spencer Kelly, and I live at 3404 Assumption Drive. I happen to be at the highest point and the furthest away from the actual problem area. All of the water off of my property does drain into a city sewer system or drain system. And I also have kept my property pretty much wooded. So when they show us the fancy picture of how to stop runoff, I pretty much, on the half acre I live at, over a quarter of it is a full wooded area that is not cut back. And it just seems like when I purchased a home, you know, several years ago, I purchased this up high because I do know the City of Grand Rapids, the closer you get to the river, you are in the river floodplain. And I do also have concerns about the church properties that sit up off of Four Mile, St. Jude, and the Baptist large lot that they have. They do have significant drain off from those areas. And I agree with the last person that I think that there could be more done that's more environmental to help with the way the water is draining without having us, all of us assessed a personal amount. I'm also confused of why that is put in as I would have to take out a loan and it doesn't go on a tax assessment so that that would carry with me even when I sell the home. And so I'm curious of why I'm going to have to shell out $3,000 on this day or take out a loan, and this isn't put into some kind of thing that stays with the house when the house is sold. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. Others wish to be heard on this drainage district?
This is also on the St. Jude Lake Drainage District. My name is Phil McGinnis. I live at 3437 Assumption Drive near her. And the two comments I have is one, probably all concerned with city engineer if he's here. The, I'm assuming that they assess the property, the cost per property based on the number of acres or square feet that you have. The problem with that is most of the water that drains into St. Jude Lake comes from the sewer, the city sewer drainage systems. Much more volume there would come off my property, which it doesn't touch the lake. And like here, I also have a very heavily wooded area below my property. I don't drain the lake. But the, if they're not assigning the city, the square feet of the street evenly, and, you know, for all the water that's coming down, I'm not sure how you calculate that, then it's not, it's not fair to assess the property owners more than the city streets area. That's one comment I have. The other comment require a map. The city, if you know what I'm, is the city engineer here? Because you'll know what I'm talking about, I hope, if you've been there. You're aware that that...
Oh, sir. Sir, can you direct your comments to us and then we'll have Mr. Berkman follow up afterwards?
I'm talking to the engineer also, though. He's familiar with his job, with the location of the lake. There is a ridge of dirt and sand, which looks to me like it's an old sand dune, running due north, see, that's north, just on the west side of the lake. And it's quite high. I've hiked up there quite a bit of times, a lot of trees, too. And on the west side of that dune, there is a creek or a river or a drainage area. But I'm not sure he included that in there. If he did, it wouldn't be assigned to one person's property. It flows, I've only been up there primarily in the winter and spring after rains, but it's significant flowing water, of water into the lake there in that creek. It may, I've considered the fact that it may actually be a city drain underneath Four Mile Road, which is where it probably comes from. I don't know the details. Hope he's considered that. If it is, there's maybe other people's property that need to be included in this besides people up on Ascension Drive. I don't know if the engineer has considered that or not. Do you talk about that ridge?
All right, sir. Go ahead and make your comments to us, and then we'll make sure we follow up.
Okay. I wonder if the engineer has considered that ridge there and the creek that's on the west side of that, going empties into St. Jude Lake. I've walked down there to the lake, and I seen this little creek. It's not on my map that he sent, that they sent me. But if he hasn't considered that creek, he has not assigned the cost evenly. I don't know where that water comes from, for sure. If it only comes from rain, maybe it comes from a sewer. I don't know. I mean, a water drain, a sewer, a sewer system. I don't, that's all I have to say. Thank you, and God bless you.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Others wish to be heard on the Lake St. Jude Drainage Improvements? Hi, welcome.
Hello. My name is Joel Vandenberg, and I live on 3452 Assumption Drive Northeast. Basically, I'm assuming that all of the properties that are on this drain detention area all drain into the Lake St. Jude. That's my assumption. So what I'm saying is if that's the case, that lake, the height of the elevation of that lake, I call it a stormwater detention pond because that's really what it is. Okay? That, the elevation of that lake is probably 60 to 70 feet below where I live. And I live in, on Assumption Drive. Now, if you're telling me that the people on Assumption Drive, and I feel sorry for anybody else, this may have a different situation, but for the people who live on Assumption Drive, there's two curb drains right in front of my house, and both of them go directly across and down into the pond. So if you're telling me that the people on Assumption Drive who have these and are 50 feet above the water height of what it's supposed to be, if there's all these, if everything's supposed to be going to that pond, and that pond will dry up sometimes in the summer, and you might not want to walk on it, but it would get down to where the water is gone. So now, it seems to me maybe dredging that pond or finding out why the water isn't making it into the pond, because the elevation of the pond itself is more than adequate to handle anything in there. Now, I'm just going to fall back on the fact that this is an engineering problem. I know the houses on Assumption Mine was built about '65. I think the houses you're talking about were probably built in the '70s, which seems to me that we were already there. Somebody's got to decide whether or not, you know, they call them minimum openings, okay? The house is built at a certain level, and it has to be able to drain accordingly. If these houses were not built, the engineering, the minimum openings weren't set for them, if they weren't built properly, this shouldn't fall back on the people. This should be something the engineer should look at and say, hey, you know what? We should have done that better. And that's really where this lies. So this shouldn't fall back on the people having to cover this. That's all I'd like to say. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Others wish to be heard on this item?
Hi. My name is Gary Dan Hollander. I live at 3434 Waterford Court. I believe that's the low point in the whole region. I think I suffer the most adverse effects of anyone here. But several months ago, I was speaking to a drain commissioner from a neighboring county, and he told me that it was illegal to divert storm sewer water onto private property. I assume he knows what he's talking about. So if that's the case, then you're asking us to pay for the damage caused by illegal activity by people prior to us. I don't know if that's an ethical way to resolve this problem. It's kind of like an abuser asking his victims to pay for the damage that he's done. So, yeah. But I can sympathize with you guys. I know this is a problem that needs to be resolved. I don't have another solution, really. But I was wondering if this particular project has been submitted for several bids or only one? If this is the most cost-effective option that we have to deal with? I know, I think it was about 10 years ago that we met with the city engineers, and they had come up with several alternatives. One of them was to make a lift station at the low point and then transport that water out to the river. And I think at the time, that was like $175,000 as an option. I don't know if that's still being considered, but it would be considerably cheaper. So I would like to suggest, you know, that that might be brought back into consideration. Also, having dealt with this flooding in my yard, some years I have the flooding year round. The waters can be about two, two and a half feet deep in my backyard. So I've lost the use of about half of my backyard, and that has not been taken into account on my assessment, on my taxes. So I've suffered a loss already, you know, paying more than my property was actually worth. So if that can be taken into consideration as well. Also, the fact that we have this swamp in the back there, you know, increases the mosquito population. So, you know, makes our backyard unusable for a good amount of the time.
Thank you. Thank you. All right.
You know how easy it is to just keep moving? All right. Hello. My name is Elena Klomp, and I am power of attorney for Raymond Kuhn at 3512 Williamson. A couple questions or concerns that I have is the work done for North Park Baptist Church where they cleared out those acres of trees. Obviously, that seems to have played into this issue. How have they been involved with this process? Are they bearing the brunt of any of this, these fees, along with the contractors that did that work? So if you guys can kind of look into that and see how they're being affected by this as well. And then secondly, to a previous person's point, my father is a low-income senior, so he does, cannot afford a one-time payment, let alone then now requiring him to take out a loan at a certain percentage, which is an additional fee for him. Whereas if you were to just assess it with the taxes over a number of years, I think that would be a more economical option, at least for him. Smaller steps as you go, so he's not hit with it all at once. So, thank you for your time today.
Thank you. All right. Others who wish to be heard on the Special Assessment District? Hi, welcome.
I'm Eileen Malonowski. I live at 3441 Waterford Court, and we get the water on both sides of us, on the south and the north side, both flooded. And we've been there since '69, and you've done a couple things, and you put money into it, and it didn't do a thing for us. We get the water back again, and I just finished up here a couple months ago hauling out 30 buckets of bark. The trees that are back there are dying. So when these die, who's going to pay for those? Besides, you want us to pay for your mistakes, but not taking care of things years ago. We've been there all this time, and we're just sick and tired of it, and all the mosquitoes, all this dirt that comes flowing in. It's time that you did something and you take care of the price, not us. And when you, you don't take care of it, who's going to take care of these dead trees when the rest of them fall? Any of you want to volunteer? We'll be happy to have you. Thank you.
You go, girl. Yeah.
Hi. My name's Heather, and I'm her backyard neighbor. So I'm on Parkway Drive at 907, and I'm the one that initiated the first round of meetings in 2009 when this all happened. This happens in our yard and has actually, we have a 55,000-gallon in-ground pool, and it's pulled our pool out from the erosion. Are you listening? Okay. So, it's, so it's cracked because of the yard. It fills so full of water, it pulls our property downhill, and it's cracked our in-ground pool. And so we've had to line our cement pool, which has cost us thousands of dollars. And then Mary, who lives next door to me, she's the one that also takes a huge grunt at this. I'm sure she's not here because she's 90-something years old. You've met with her, too. And I just think there would be a better way to assess this fee. I don't understand why. I only own Point 1390 acres, and I'm being assessed over $5,000. The people behind me are being assessed over $9,000. And I just don't understand why our portion is so large and the city's portion is so low. portion is so low. And if there's, are the churches being assessed? Because Mary, who lives behind, well, next door to me, the one that's 97, she said this didn't happen until all of that land was cleared above her. And that's when they started bringing the pump out, because the pump runs next to her, over the sidewalk between our homes. And it sounds like this new solution is going to be between our homes. I'm just wondering why we're paying so much of it. And it's kind of hard to write a check for $5,300, just out of nowhere. So, that's all. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, is there anyone else who's in, this is for people who are in this district?
Yes.
So you have to live, you have to, this is only for people?
I will not be censored again. I do live on Assumption. I also have a relative who lives off Laberton Lake Drive.
What is the address?
I'm not comfortable giving you my address because of the police brutality and police retaliation that's been happening to activists. So I will not give that to you. I know that this is a very water-populated area. Back where my grandma lives, there's, you know, Dean Lake, there's Laberton Lake, she has a creek. And also near Assumption, there's St. Jude Lake. And I'm wondering why residents are being, in this case, it would be my parents being charged, when there's a lot of commercial land near that area, you know, Four Mile, there's like where the Walgreens is and that kind of thing, and more, that's flat land that I know does contribute to a lot of runoff. And I'm wondering why it would be put on the residents before the commercial spaces, especially when I'm seeing all of these proposals in other areas of the agenda that show the city paying for things, especially like, you know, drain maintenance when it has to with downtown, or sidewalk repair, where that's not going towards, the cost isn't going towards residents, it's being paid by the city. This, I know that this area, partially because of my grandma, partially because I know of the people that go to the church with me, is a very senior-populated area. It's a lot of retired people, who at this point cannot afford expenses like that. It's really not good for the community, and it just, the tax or the expense should not go towards residences, especially when it sounds like, I don't know, architecture, I don't know the building, whatever engineering goes behind that. But I know others spoke about that, and it seems like the problem happened before them, so why are we all paying for it now?
Thank you. All right, Mr. Berkman, can you, where's our city engineer? Can you come up and maybe answer a few of these comments? I'm having the city engineer come up.
I'm going to be able to speak after, right?
This is about the drainage district, and those who are being assessed.
Of course, I wouldn't have stood up if I wasn't.
You need to, you need to move away from the microphone.
I think you need to continue to do what you're going to do, and stop trying to censor people. Thank you.
I'm not. Mr. Berkman, can you please speak to a couple, perhaps even speak to how the boundaries are drawn, and then also the point about one-time payment versus assessed? Maybe some of the other questions that were posed?
Sure.
Before we close this public hearing.
Yeah, so there...
You have other questions, so I would like to ask those questions.
You know what? You are being disruptive, and I'm going to ask you to stop disrupting. If you continue to disrupt, Mr. Berkman, I'm going to ask you to leave. Go ahead, Mr. Berkman.
So as far as the calculation that was done to determine the assessment amount for the property owners within...
Mr. Berkman is speaking. Mr. Berkman is speaking. Do not disrupt people who are speaking. Do not disrupt.
There was no crime here. Why is it not being allowed?
Order. Excuse me, order. Mr. Berkman, it is his opportunity to speak and answer questions. Order in the chambers. If you continue to disrupt, I will ask you to leave. Screaming out loud is disrupting the order of this meeting, and I'm giving you a warning.
In your shirt.
Order, 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 order. You're disrupting the order of this meeting. Screaming and disrupting someone who is speaking is disorder, disorderly conduct and disrupting this meeting. Order in this, order in this chamber. If you disrupt people who are talking, that is disrupting the order of this meeting. Go ahead, Mr. Berkman.
All right, so there were a number of factors that went into determining how much individual properties were to be assessed. And so those include a runoff factor, so how much runoff is expected to come off of those properties. So looking at the specific size or portion of the individual property that is draining towards this watershed area. So it may not be the entire property, it may be a corner of the property. But the proximity factor was used to lands that are more distant from the problem area, as opposed to those that are more close to where the flooding is occurring. A direct benefit factor, which assigns benefits from reductions and flooding to the properties that are currently experiencing it. A storage factor was applied, which lowers the apportionment for those where their land is used to store some stormwater. And then there was a base benefit percentage that was applied. And so this methodology has been utilized before in terms of how to distribute the costs, because there are folks at different levels, at different elevations, at different areas. And so that was all tied into it. And I've heard the churches reference the number of times, those are two of the largest areas, and subsequently, two, the two largest assessment shares. And so the city's method was the same in terms of determining what our percentage was. In fact, we took a 20% off the top to cover the city's share, but then also any city right-of-way, public property utilized the same calculation to apportion those costs to the public spaces as well. As far as the one-time payment, there is an opportunity to spread it over 10 years. There is a interest factor applied to that. But also, I think somebody mentioned, you know, what if I sell my home? So the, as we move forward with this, the, if it moves forward, that is, the treasurer's office is notified, and each parcel is flagged, and if there is a transfer of ownership, then that's something that would be addressed at closing of that transfer of property. So that's, again, as far as alternatives that were looked at, that was mentioned, we did look at four alternatives. One was the lift station that somebody referenced. That is a mechanical means. Obviously, gravity is the ideal solution, because you're not relying on pumps, you're not maintaining pumps, you're not having to have backup generation if there's a power failure. And when those costs were reexamined and reevaluated as part of this 2019 effort, that was determined to have a higher cost than merely putting in a gravity storm sewer pipe to drain away. Another option that was looked at was just, could the, could the area be re-sculpted? Could there be a berm in place to kind of hold back Lake St. Jude from spilling out into this area? And the soils are such that it's a very mucky nature, very wet soils, that, that would just circumvent any berm that is put in place, and groundwater levels would still shift. So our consultants looked at that, did not feel like that was an adequate solution, nor would it be a cheaper solution if it could, if it could be explored further. You know, the other, the other option that's currently happening is the, what the city's doing today in terms of pumping it down, running hoses across people's properties. But that involves disruption to those properties. It involves staff continually having to go out there, fuel these pumps, and maintain these pumps when they're not, when they're needed. So I think, I think I hit on some of, some of the highlights, but happy to answer any additional questions you, you all may have as a commission.
Commissioners, any additional questions for the city engineer? Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Berkman.
Madam Mayor.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead, Commissioner.
I do have one. I just wanted to ask, where does the fee come in for the community being assessed for this project? I mean, I'm hearing everybody talk about a fee. Where does that come in at?
So I think they're talking about, so each person who is, each property owner that's in the district received a mailer that identified what their percentage of the apportionment share would be, based on those factors that I mentioned earlier. And so that percentage was then applied to that $400,000 over amount, overall amount that was to be apportioned across the other owners of that district. And so that would in effect be the fee that could either be paid on a one-time basis, or spread out over 10 years.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Connor, did you have a question?
Yes, Mayor, just a couple of questions. It appears that the, the lake is contained within the bounds of one single property owner. Is that correct? And so what, what liability and/or responsibility does that single entity have, even though they are included in this, in the special assessment district? It feels like as the body of water is contained within a, you know, a single, single property user-owner. Like, do you feel that? Just trying to wrap my head around that, I guess. Second question is, what if we do, if this does not pass, then what, what happens? And then third is, you know, during these events, the city has taken temporary measures to address these concerns. What are the, what's the cost of the current taxpayer burden every time there's an event that we have to do a temporary mandate solution to address this problem?
Yeah. So Environmental Services District Manager Mike Grenier is here, so I may call on him to answer the second question, as far as what, what will they continue to do if this is not explored. But as far as your first question, and that where Lake St. Jude is currently located, yes, that's a, that's a factor of, the storage factor that I mentioned. And so that was applied to how the costs were determined in terms of, a lot of the water is stored in that area, but the low-lying elevations are very flat in and around that area. So as, as the rains come and more water runs off of all of these properties, they, they build up. And when it, when it, when the water levels rise, that's when it extends to some of these homes that are in the Waterford Court and Parkway areas. The, the costs of the current approach are minimal, in terms of, you know, it's a two-horsepower pump that staff have to drag out there as needed, and, and fill it with fuel. But it's not a, it's not a permanent solution. But as far as what would happen if, you know, if this is not pursued further?
Certainly. We'd be back to the drawing board. So we've got with our engineer, looked for solutions. This is not ideal, but we'd have to go back and reevaluate other options. What those are, I don't know at this point in time, but that's, that's what our next course would be.
All right, so Mr. Berkman, for individuals who want to follow up with you, they can contact our office directly?
Yes, and every, every resident has our information from the letter that was mailed out. They can reach out to us by phone, email, calling 311. And happy to, we've had many discussions with a number of them, and happy to continue to do those as well.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. All right, we're going to close that public hearing, and that's going to be referred back to our Community Development Committee. All right, that will take us to our last opportunity for public comment. Again, we ask that you share your name, the city that you live in, and we'll be giving you up to three minutes to speak.
Again, good evening. My name is Daniel Scutt. I live in Grand Rapids, and I am a follower of the Lord Jesus Christ. I want to thank you again, Mayor Bliss, and all you commissioners, for the work you're doing for our city. I may not agree with all that you do, but I know it's difficult days for the city, and indeed for our whole nation. And again, I want you to know that I pray for you every day, as a group, not individually, but as a group. And if you ever would need a, someone to pray for you, personal request, family request, city request, I would be happy to do that, as well as many other Christians that I know, followers of Christ in the city. The almighty scriptures declare, this is Psalm 139, "O Lord, you have searched me and known me. You know when I sit down and when I rise up. You understand my thought from afar. You scrutinize my path..."
Do not disrupt him. He has a right to speak.
"...by lying down, and are intimately acquainted with all my ways. Even before there is a word on my tongue. Behold, O Lord, you know it all. You have enclosed me behind and before, and laid your hand upon me. Such knowledge is too wonderful for me, it is too high, I cannot attain to it. Where can I go from your spirit? Where can I flee from your presence? If I ascend into heaven, behold, you are there. If I take the wings of the dawn, if I dwell in the remotest parts of the sea, even there, your hand will lead me. You formed my inward parts. You wove me in my mother's womb. I will give thanks to you, for I am fearfully and wonderfully made. Wonderful are your works, and my soul knows it very well. My frame was not hidden from you when I was made in secret, and skillfully wrought in the depths of the earth. Your eyes have seen my unformed substance, and in your book were all written, the days that were ordained for me, when as yet there was none of them. How precious are your thoughts unto me, O God! How vast is the sum of them! If I should count them, they are more than number than the sand. When I awake, I am still with thee." I wanted to just make an appeal. I understand the city has a lot of money. Again, I want to make an appeal for those that have no voice, our fellow citizens that are the unborn. Why not advocate some funds for the very poor women that are with child, unexpectedly, unwantedly, and out of fear they may want to have the baby destroyed? Why not use some of these funds to make a house? Give them housing, give them health care. We could provide the spiritual input.
All right, thank you. Your time's up. Thank you, Mr. Scutt.
Thank you.
All right, others wish to be heard?
Good evening, Mayor Bliss and city commissioners. My name's Jordan. I'm living in Grand Rapids. I come here today to make you aware of the atrocity of abortion that is happening in our very city. In our city limits alone, we average murdering 80 to 100 children every single week. We currently have one surgical abortion location, and another chemical pill location, Heritage Clinic for Women, and Planned Parenthood. God created man in his own image. In the image of God, he created them, male and female. The reality is, a person's value is not determined on size, location, development, or viability, but that we are made in the image of God. From every law, we have to protect life, to preserve life, and every law, we have to bring victims to justice. I ask you to work with my organization, and with our churches in Grand Rapids, to bring equal protection to all of your citizens, and to end child murder in Grand Rapids. Abortion is murder and a hate crime against these children.
Do not interrupt him. Jordan, Jordan, can you hold on just one second? No, you all, there are several people that have tried to interrupt him. Let him speak. Everyone has a right to be heard, even if you do not agree with them. They have a right to speak without being interrupted. Interrupting speakers is disrupting the order of this meeting, and you're going to be, I'm going to ask you to leave if you don't let him speak. I'm, I'm going to ask you to leave if you disrupt one more time. Go ahead, Jordan.
Thank you, Mayor.
Go ahead, Jordan.
Thank you, Mayor. So abortion is murder and a hate crime against these children, and they deserve justice. As you've been elected as either commissioners or mayor of this remarkable city, I encourage you and remind you of your role. Ultimately, God has put you in a position of authority in this city, and you are called to use that authority with equal weights and measures. We see in Hebrews 9:27, "And just as is appointed to man once to die, and after that comes a judgment." I want to remind us all that, Mayor Bliss and commissioners, you too will give an account before the Lord for the stewardship he has given you, and he will judge with perfect justice. I truly want to encourage you in your stewardship. Take no shortcuts. Do not fear men who can only harm the body, rather fear the Lord, who can destroy both body and soul in hell, Matthew 10:28. Take heed now and know this: We will all be back, and with encouragement for you, as long as it lasts, as you are striving to seek justice for the city. We're patient and willing to back you for the long haul. But know this: If you lack or cower by the grace of God, by the grace of God, our voices will grow in the city, and so will our numbers. And come next election, mayor and commissioners, in each word, know this: The apathy or lack of responsibility for this office will not be tolerated, and will not receive votes from the pro-life or Christian community, no matter if you are party-affiliated or not. I want to leave you with the good news. Jesus Christ came into the world fully God and fully man. He lived a perfect and sinless life, even to death. The Father poured out his wrath on Christ as a sacrifice in payment for the sins of God's children. Every sin will be punished justly, every sin exposed. The good news is this, that if you would confess with your mouth and believe in your heart that Jesus Christ is Lord, then your sins will have been paid for, and you will have peace with God. Thank you for your time.
All right, others wish to be heard?
Good evening. My name's Daniel. I'm here to address the council and the people in this room, to let them know...
Daniel, can you, can you bring the microphone a little bit closer?
Sure, thank you.
Thanks.
My name's Daniel, if you didn't hear. I'm here to address the council and the rest of the people in this room. I'm here to address the council and the rest of the people in this room about the, the murder that's happening in the womb. This city has two places that do abortions, one by the pill, like my friend Jordan said, and one surgically. God has made clear in His Word what He, what He commands about murder, what He commands about lives, what He tells us about justice, and His value of justice. God values Patrick. God values his life, and He wants justice for what happened there. God values the women who have babies that they don't want. God values everyone in this room, whether they're scoffers at God or whether they, they believe in God, whether they live according to His statutes. But God has laid a law. He's commanded His people to abide by His law, and all who don't abide by His law, they will suffer the consequences. God is a God who loves justice, and because of God's love for justice, the justice that, that we seem to hold is such an esteem because of His love for justice, He cannot let the guilty go free. Isn't this the justice that, that the city wants? The justice that everybody in this room seems to want? They say justice for Patrick. They say justice for George Floyd, and that's true. Justice for Patrick. Black lives do matter. Those are true sayings, but without God, they're not true at all. Not at all. Not one bit. Without God, our lives are meaningless.
Hey, hey, the, the, the person in the blue, please let him speak. Even if you don't agree with him, people have a right to be heard. Sir, I'm going to, if you disrupt one more time, I'm going to ask you both to leave. I'm going to ask you to leave if you disrupt him. He has a right to be heard, even if you don't agree with him. Go ahead.
Thank you. I'd like to read something from God's Word. It says in Psalm, Chapter 2, it says, "Why does the heathen rage? And the people imagine a vain thing. The kings of the earth set themselves, and the rulers take counsel together against the Lord and against his anointed, saying, 'Let us cast their cords asunder and break their bands from us.' But he that sitteth in the heavens shall laugh; the Lord shall have them in derision. Then shall he speak unto them in his wrath, and in vain, and, and, and in vex shall he vex them in sore displeasure.'" It says at the end, "Kiss the Son, lest you die in his wrath." The people of this world are so, so warped to their own understanding of what truth is, their own understanding of what justice is, that they've forgotten the very nature by which they were born. They've forgotten the God that created them, and God says, "The fool says in his heart there is no God. Ask yourselves how many of these in this room, how many on the council..."
All right, your time's up.
"...are foolish." Thank you. Honesty.
All right. Others wish to be heard?
Good evening. What is murder? Murder is the unrighteous disposition...
Sir, can you, sir, can you start with your name and the city that you live in?
Oh, my name's Jeff.
Jeff.
Speaking on the same issue as my brother's here. What is murder? Murder is the unrighteous disposition within one's own heart toward one, toward another individual which, when acted upon, results in the killing of a human life. Murder is a crime under the law of God and must be legislated against in order to protect the innocent. The Sixth Commandment says, "Thou shall not murder." Leviticus 24:17 says, "Whoever takes a human life shall surely be put to death." Unborn children are human lives. Genesis 1:27 says, "So God created man in His own image. In the image of God He created him; male and female He created them." Psalm 139, 13 through 16, says, "For you formed my inward parts; you knitted me together in my mother's womb. I praise you, for I am fearfully and wonderfully made. Wonderful are your works; my soul knows it very well. My frame was not hidden from you when I was being made in secret. Intricately woven in the depths of the earth, your eyes saw my unformed substance, and your book were written, every one of them, the days that were formed for me, when as yet there was none of them." Therefore, because unborn children are human, they are worthy of life and protection, and those in civil authority have an obligation to God to protect them and to enforce justice against those that would kill them, to reward good and punish evil. 1 Peter 2:13 says that governors are sent by God to punish those who do evil and to praise those who do good. It is necessary for lesser magistrates to ignore, defy, an opinion from the Supreme Court that is not law. Our original system of government, according to the Constitution, states that only Congress has the authority to make law. Therefore, Roe versus Wade is not law. It was a federal ruling based on the false premise that unborn children are potential human beings. The overwhelming testimony of Scripture and biological science states otherwise, and so Roe must be ignored and defied by local government to protect all of its citizens. When the nation has rebelled against God and His commands, we must obey God rather than men. Acts 5:28 through 29, the high priest said to Peter, "We strictly charge you to not teach in his name; yet here you have filled Jerusalem with your teaching, and you intend to bring this man's blood upon us?" But Peter and the apostles answered, "We must obey God rather than men." The shedding of innocent blood brings judgment upon the nation that commits the act. God hates the hands that shed innocent blood. Abortion is the sacrifice of children in the womb as a result of the sinfulness of the human heart. Leviticus 21 through 3 says, "Say to the people of Israel, any of the people of Israel or of the strangers who sojourn in Israel who gives any of his children to Molech shall surely be put to death. The people of the land shall stone him with stones. I myself will set my face against that man and will cut him off from among his people, because he has given one of his children to Molech, to make my sanctuary unclean and to profane my holy name. And if the people of the land do at all close their eyes to that man when he gives one of his children to Molech, they do not put him to death. And I will set my face against that man."
All right, your time's up.
Okay. God bless you.
All right. Others wish to be heard?
Good evening, Lucas First Ward. I want to interrupt this theocracy break to thank Mayor Bliss, Mr. Washington, Chief Winstrom, Mr. Davis, Mr. Green for engaging with me via email and meetings recently. Also Commissioner Jones, aside from my positive relationship with one of my commissioners, Mr. Repert, you're the only other one up there that's bothered to engage, and that's much appreciated. The culture war raging in this nation is very present here in our beautiful city. As I've said, you didn't ask to be leaders at these times, but these times have come while you are the leaders. A third of Americans want a new civil war. I believe we're at war already, and we have been for many years, a cold civil war. The gullible rubes who keep pushing for that war show no end to their hypocrisy. Like sniveling children, they back the blue until they don't get their way, as proven in the congressional hearings right now. As leaders at a time of war, you've done a bad job articulating your powers in this room. Inappropriate uses of authority didn't help either, as we've seen in how these meetings often end. It's not fair that it falls on you to educate average folks about how this chamber works and how the city versus the county works, but this right-wing movement in this nation has made sure that we don't teach civics anymore, so now it's your problem. Mayor, you recently thanked people for respecting the time needed to investigate the murder of Patrick Leoya. But those of us who've been disrespectful didn't disrespect that. We disrespected the fact that most of you would bloviate about having little to say along the way. You all could have and should have said more. You're finally talking about reforms at state and federal levels, but in these commission meetings where the people are right in front of you asking for your positions and your responses, you've been mute. That's why I've pressed you in writing to revise the rules of your meeting, especially Number 5. You should indeed respond to citizen remarks, and any refusal is just political cowardice on your part. You are staying, are starting a lot of good, important work. Bias policies should have already been destroyed without a life having to be destroyed, to make that clear to you. Police unions have far too much power over you as leaders and against the people they're supposed to protect, though I think we've all learned through Texas who they really want to protect. Your addressing of these issues needs to be swift, brutal, and decisive. Peacetime approaches will not suffice. Changing all this is going to require a lot more guts than I've seen from this city's government so far. Rise to the occasion, put on your war face like the rest of us have been forced to. Thank you. Let me use the balance of my time, Mayor. This is the first night that you've articulated the rules thoroughly and enforced them like your superior performing colleague. And I appreciate that, but I really don't understand why it took so many months and people like me contacting you to beg you to take control and do the job right.
Thanks. All right, others wish to be heard?
My name is Emma. I again want to ask that you do not censor me as you did the past few times I've spoke and you're continuing to do to my fellow citizens. You may not be the one pulling the trigger, but that censorship kills. I'm also going to start now, having said that, with a quote by Angela Davis. "Just as we hear calls today for more humane policing, people then called for more humane slavery." Let me say that again. "Just as we hear calls today for more humane policing, people then called for a more humane I'm going to address, again, I only have three minutes. I wish I had time to address all the action items, which you wasted my time asking me which ones. I do know what I'm talking about. Maybe you didn't recognize what was in the end agenda items because you didn't read it thoroughly, but I spent about eight hours reading through everything, so I know what I'm talking about. I want to address several things that the police chief said, who, by the way, I only have three minutes. He is allowed to come every time at the Public Safety Committee and allowed to control the narrative on crime. Several things he said today, really, I feel, I don't feel great about them. I'll say that lightly. You said, he said, quote, "Violent crime will be my number one priority while I'm, while I am police chief here." He also said, "We're an important part of the solution to solving murders."
Let her, let her speak.
That particular statement in general makes no sense to me when the GRPD are those committing the murders. I want to then say, he said something along the lines of punishment is a powerful deterrent to crime. I don't find that true when crime is increasing, when historically over the past few years, GRPD budget has increased and carceral resources have increased over the past few years, where things like housing and mental health care have not. Which was that statement which was then made null by Brandon Davis, talking about cure, cure violence, when he said, "Studies show," or it was just, the reasoning behind cure violence is that studies show that communities with increased policing, and policing doesn't actually have an effect on crime. Investing in the community does. So I don't know how he can say that, and then the government again say afterwards that that statement was not true. I don't know where you're getting your data from or how you're interpreting it, but it doesn't sound like you're doing a good job with it. There's plenty of resources out there. Read them, then inform the policy. Don't just fly off your ass.
Thank you. Your time's up. All right, others wish to be heard?
Hello. So I'm here to just speak on the fact that the disrespect of having like meetings and conversations about a budget that you already allowed is crazy, and if you didn't already allow it, then I'm just even more confused as to why I seen an officer of ours here of Grand Rapids driving a three-wheeled motorcycle down Union in Fulton. I looked up that said motorcycle and the littlest one of that, which this one was huge, was $50,000. Now, that's not souped up or custom painted, right? So that's a 50 thou, what are you doing on that bike? What are you doing on that bike? It's a three-wheel motorcycle that old guys and young cats ride around town to look hot and pick up chicks. What are you doing with a bike that probably costs up to $100,000? But yet you asked us for more money for these vehicles, right? Not to mention, some of the vehicles are already brand new. We're not stupid, okay? We can tell a new vehicle when we see it. So the audacity of you guys sitting up here and pretending like things are actually happening when you've already sealed the deal is disgraceful and disgusting, but is completely accepted from the faces of you. So that's just horrendous. We demand that Christopher Sherbe put back in jail and charged with first-degree murder because we all know that that was premeditation because he had to have turned off his body cam or disabled it in some kind of way and then turned it back on. Sus. Suspicious for the old folk. Why is he out on bail? Okay, didn't even show up in person for court. Isn't that, that not a stipulation of bail? His lawyer did his talking while you guys roped off a whole section for his fam to come That's insanity. Justice for Patrick Leoya? You should be defunded down to the mandated 32% since abolishing is just a big scary word for all you grownups. It's ridiculous that, you must not have kids, Bliss. Maybe some step-ones, I'm not sure. Got a little hot rod boyfriend somewhere? I'm not, I don't know. But you sit here and you stare people down like they're a fucking five-year-old. Oh, sorry. Oh, that's just my daily language, I'm sorry. Like they're five years old, like you're doing right now. Like, that's going to do something to an adult. You are not scary. You are very weak, and that's, that you can tell by the way you react to people. How did Joseph Jones conduct a perfectly well-commissioned meeting without you? But yeah, every time you're here cutting people off, claiming everybody else is cutting them off. You're the only one wasting people's time. And I'll keep coming back because it's justice for Patrick Leoya.
Your time's up. Your time's up. Your time is up. Your time is up. Your time is up. Your time's up. All right, others who wish to be heard? Hi, welcome.
My name is Carrie. You've heard me speak several times now. Again, I will reiterate that I am well-educated. I'm a military veteran, well-trained in the use of force. Every video that I've seen on the Patrick Leoya murder, Christopher Sherbe ignored every bit of use of force training. In the military, we weren't allowed to use any force like that unless there was a weapon directly pointed at us. And yet he had somebody face down on the ground and could murder them with a shot to the back of the head, and nothing is being done about it. It should be a first-degree murder charge, and he should still be sitting in prison. And yet activists who are peacefully protesting and using our First Amendment rights, as we should in this situation, are being actively harassed and intimidated and arrested on false charges. Continually, I see GRPD coming near where we are doing community service. We are feeding and giving water to and clothing to the unhoused downtown on a daily basis, especially in the summer when it's 90 degrees outside. And yet GRPD will continue to drive by 15 times to attempt to intimidate, just like they did the day I was sitting in the park by myself, and they drove on the sidewalk next to me to attempt to intimidate when there was nobody else there and no reason for them to do so. It is ridiculous that our tax dollars are paying for new GRPD vehicles and for as much ammunition as they've paid for in the last few months. So they can do what? Continue to harass and intimidate and brutalize and murder our citizens? It's definitely time to bring them back down to the mandated 32% and reallocate your budgeting to actually benefit your community through housing initiatives, through mental health initiatives, through actual community initiatives that will help the unhoused, which we have a large population. I wish you all would sit there and actually do something.
Thank you. All right, others wish to be heard?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Tony Moran. I live on Waterford Court. I apologize for being delayed on that particular topic. I saw the agenda. We were last on the agenda, so I, I'm sorry to be, but I'll just take 30 seconds. I just want to sympathize with the vote that you guys need to make on this particular issue. Unfortunately, there's a few people who, you know, are really in a bad situation with a really nasty problem in their backyard that's dangerous for some other people. And on the other flip side of the coin, you got a bunch of... And on the other flip side of the coin, you got a bunch of people that don't understand why they have any reason to want to pay for it. So I really do sympathize with your difficult decision on that. But I just want to reiterate something. I heard Commissioner Connor, Connor asked a really excellent question. Before you vote no on this, I'd like to know what the other option is. And I didn't really, I didn't hear an answer to that question. So I know it's a difficult question for you guys to answer, but before you vote no, I'd really like to ask that you understand what the option is because for these residents that are, have been dealing with this for a long time, just doing nothing is really not a, not a way to move forward. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All right, others wish to be heard?
How you doing, everybody? My name is Deandre Jones. Gotta say, man, I'm not really big on the faith community. I believe we coexist, but I respect everybody's way they experience the universe. It's almost cancer season. I'm very spiritual. I believe in astrology. See my shirt, I'm a Cancer, July 10th, big crap. But anyways, I would like to say, the four community sessions that I held around participatory budgeting, I held one in the Hispanic community and I gotta say that when we held that meeting on division, they gave out $25 gift cards. So not only did the Hispanic community actually get educated on the participatory budgeting process, they actually gave out hundreds of dollars in gift cards for that community. I'm very happy that I've took the information that our assistant city manager, and when he has spoke that only five to six percent of that community was engaged in the process and they actually got paid to listen to the information and potentially get their ideas funded to help their community. Also, since people think I'm just so pro-police and I'm just this police ass guy, we have that mandatory, we have that new budget amendment, that charter, because in 1995, that's when they actually put the mandatory 32%. So there's a petition out there on the city's desk, right there where you can get your parking validated, if you didn't even know you can get your parking validated. There's actually a petition for people out here that's been, the activist that's been complaining, the people that's been complaining, there's a whole petition out there. There's even an information sheet because it's only, it's only, it's only, only the city only spends 2% of our budget on human services. You guys can actually collect signatures to make sure that that mandatory 32% is not a thing anymore and that we can actually prioritize.
Don't interrupt him.
That we can prioritize the actual community's priorities, like affordable housing, mental health services, economic growth. This is the second ward city for economic development. People always got these problems, but no solutions. There's a solution on the table. Don't put me in your group chat. Don't put me on your Facebook. Don't share page.
Let him speak. Let him speak.
Don't put me on your, don't put me on your social media. Please post that, please post that petition. Please post that information because y'all laughing, but we need 10,000 signatures to make sure that the police department doesn't actually have that 32 mandatory percent. They don't need that much funding. They don't need that much funding. This is something that we can actually do. This is something that you can actually do. Instead of laughing, go pick up the petitions. Go to the ACLU, go to LinkUp, go to the N O A C P and ask them for petitions. Because I know y'all think, I could, police officers could target me for saying these things. Do y'all hear what I'm saying? Do you actually hear what I'm saying? I'm saying that people have been complaining for two years about the mandatory 32% that the city allocates because the police department gets majority of our funding and we can reimagine our police department in our community and we can actually reinvest. So take those petitions and take that information and post it on your organization pages and y'all pages. Don't take my pictures off my social media page.
All right, all right. Thank you, Mr. Jones. Thank you. All right, Mr. Jones, Mr. Jones, no more, stop.
You were not.
We were in the meeting.
Okay, Mr. Jones, Mr. Jones, hey, hey. Deandre, Deandre, stop being disruptive. It is the next person's opportunity to speak.
Well, my main concern is safety. My name is Cindy Hicks and safety of the people that attend this meeting is 100% important to me. So far in the last few months that I've come here, I feel frightened and threatened when I leave and I don't think anybody should feel that way to come to a city meeting. I currently, I really went to Anita Hitchcock and Mark Washington, putting warrants out for my arrest for my 2010 tax return. I mean, come on, Donald Trump doesn't show his tax return, but I'm asked to and told if I don't do it, I'm going to jail. So I want every resident of the city of Grand Rapids to know that if you don't save your tax returns for the last 12 years, you too could get audited for your taxes. Okay? And we're not talking like Cindy makes big dollars because Cindy spends time in the community. Okay? You know, it's not a, a big checks, okay? 2010, yeah, the housing market was not at its peak. But, you know, my main concern is safety. You know, the only thing I've done is come to this meeting and speak out against police violence and brutality. It's disgusting that I'm facing tax evasion charges. And what about all the other people that are facing misdemeanors and felonies? Since when does the city of Grand Rapids want to spend its money prosecuting people that are practicing their First Amendment right to speak up for black lives and for Patrick's life? And all the people that have been brutalized by police, including my family? It's disgusting that I'm harassed this way. Let's talk about collecting food stamps while I got unemployment. I'm getting harassed about that too. I didn't even have money for seven months. No child support. But, you know, asking me to pay, oh, and trust me, if you want to throw me in jail for my 2010, 11 and 12 tax returns, because apparently I owe, you know, the city didn't keep records, so they want me to produce the records and a tax return. $200 each year? Really? I'm worth putting in jail? You all should be ashamed. It's sick. The only thing, the only thing I come and speak for is justice. You know, because black lives really don't matter on the South Side, not on the Southwest, not on the Southeast, you know? And yes, I do spend my time with unhoused people, not just make it a commission to sell something. Okay? In fact, I haven't sold anything over COVID. How about that? But I, I do got money for my, I brought $1,200 to court and the judge never had a bill for me. How about that? Let's talk about that. But there was a warrant, but no bill for me to pay, but I brought money. But the only people that can dismiss that charge is Anita Hitchcock and Mark Washington.
Thank you.
And you can dismiss all the charges for all the protesters here.
Thanks. All right, others who wish to be heard?
Hi, my name is Christian. I live in the first ward. At first liked to, I guess, commend Mark Washington in some way for firing Christopher Scher from the GR, Grand Rapids Police Department recently after he was charged with second degree murder. I thought it should have been done the day that he was charged, but, or the day that, you know, you watched the video and watched him shoot somebody in the back of the head, a citizen in the Grand Rapids, a public servant. Because if I shot somebody in the back of the head, I'd get fired from my job and I'd be charged with second degree murder or even first degree murder immediately. Secondly, I'd like to talk about the 150 city public servants that showed up to the courthouse two Tuesdays ago in support of Christopher Scher. The amount of anger that I saw from them, the amount of violence that they perpetrated, they pushed us, there was like seven of us and there was like 125 of them. They pushed us around, poked and prodded at us. Oh yeah, concealed weapons in a courthouse, by the way. They had weapons on them. Off duty police officers had weapons. If I carried my firearm that I own into a courthouse, I'd be arrested. I'd probably be tackled by the deputies who are on duty and I might even be shot. And yet, off duty police officers are able to do that. And all that, but the officers that serve a city are that angry about an officer being charged legally by the law, something that they're supposed to uphold? They're that angry? And they're the ones who are supposed to patrol our streets, protect our citizens, go under our community and help them? Police department definitely needs some anger management classes. Definitely. That was a lot of officers, a lot, who showed up. That's pretty crazy. That's, that's amazing that that many officers showed up and then nobody really took notice of it. None of you guys did. I'd also like to say that I welcome whoever's gonna be at this Thursday's candidate meeting for the city commission and other offices there. I'm gonna have some hard questions for you, specifically, specific people, because it's time that either you do something or you shut up and move. Because as city commissioners, you've done nothing great for this city. Maybe there's one or two of you who've been on the city commission long enough for you to say you did something, but the blood of Patrick Loia is on your hands. And the continued retaliation and the continued targeting of activists in the city for standing up for, for Patrick Loia and other, other Black Lives Matter and other social justice issues is disgusting. And I can't wait to, to run for office and be in one of your seats so I can actually commit change, unlike you guys do.
Thank you. Thanks. All right, others wish to be heard?
Hi, my name is Libby and I live in the second ward. The first thing I want to kind of mention here is I've lived here a long time. I'm, you know, a middle aged woman here. And I've, I have emailed my city commissioners and I've gotten responses back from them. Mayor Bliss, when you were my city commissioner, you responded. Ruth Kelly would respond. I have not gotten any response from anybody in the city, except for a very, you know, brief kind of like, the mayor appreciates your email. I've not gotten anything. I mean, there are lots of questions I have. I mean, I'm, I'm glad that the murderer was arrested. I understand that there are procedures, you know, I understand why he's not in jail and why he got bond. But there are other issues in the city. You know, you guys have taken money away from some groups. One thing I, I have a real problem with is there's no parking enforcement in the city for half of the week. It stops at seven o'clock. I don't know if people know this, but you're not gonna get ticketed if you're parked illegally because nobody's coming out to ticket you unless you're downtown. I don't get a response on that from any of you guys. I would also like to see the office of, you know, Brandon's office, I would like to see them be able to have access to all the police reports. There's no reason that they don't. I've tried to see the law, the, the police chief had said to me at the last meeting that there was a law. I tried to look it up. It basically appears to me, I'm not a lawyer, obviously, that they, they can get that access as long as they're given permission to have the access to the police reports. You can find a lot out about a police officer by reading police reports. You really can. You can, and you can see when there's multiple officers reporting on one incident, how some say one thing and others say another thing. I think it's really important that they have access to that information without having to go through GRPD to get that access. It would just make their job easier. It would make it so that you don't always have to wonder, you know, what is the motive for them getting access to that police report instead of all the others? Like I said, you can, I used to have a list of cops who I thought were kind of crappy cops, based off of responses and their police reports. People that are trained to, or whose job it is to look at police officers would also be able to do that, get a sense of what these officers do and how they react. But like I said, also, I would love it if there could be some responses back from the city. I understand you guys are being inundated with a lot of stuff. COVID has not been a great time to be a public official in any capacity. But that doesn't mean that your responsibility stopped. We all have had a hard time these past couple of years and had to continue on with our jobs and our duties and our families. And I would appreciate the respect of responses.
Thank you. Appreciate that. All right, others wish to be heard?
Hello, I'm Andrea. I'm from Grand Rapids. Recently, Mayor Bliss, you were seen on camera stating that the city of Grand Rapids is committed to systemic change. You then went on to say that this city body has been fully committed towards transforming policing and accountability the last five years and went on to talk about funding towards OPA. So you admitted that whatever you've been working on the last five years has been a failure. Because look where we are now with Chris Scher facing a murder charge. It should be first degree with jurors from the 49507 zip code where the murder happened. So what does systemic change mean to you all? When you continuously throw more and more money at the police who brutalize and kill the community? Anytime anyone asks Brandon Davis a question, we get, that's part of the reimagine, reimagine process. He says that when he either doesn't want to answer a question or can't answer because he doesn't know. The word reimagine is an action verb. Where's the action? You claim you understand what it means and yet you are adamant. And some of you, Mark Washington, are extremely intimidated by defunding GRPD. Why is that? Is it because of the DeVos family, the Lacks family, the bourgeoisie that line your pockets? Mark Washington? I'm asking you. You were awarded for doing great business in this city, but what about the majority of us working class citizens? We don't have housing. We can't afford housing. We don't have resources. Our taxes are ridiculous and going up constantly. You arrested peaceful activists four weeks ago for erroneous warrant charges. Coincidentally, while they were on their way to use their voice at this commission meeting. Drop the charges on peaceful protesters. Defund the police. Justice for Patrick! Justice for Patrick! Justice for Patrick! Black Lives Matter!
All right, all right. Others who wish to be heard?
Hi, my name's John Williamson. I own a house in the third ward. I went to Calvin College. I'm an Eagle Scout. I, I used to work at Mars Hill Bible Church. I'm a youth pastor. I'm a small group leader. I'm like a good citizen. I have a TV show on GRTV. It's like Mr. Rogers hosts David Letterman. Like that's who I am. Then the police killed Patrick Leoya and it's right in my neighborhood. And then I get activated into this movement and I start showing up every day to protest the death of an innocent man by the police. And I keep wondering where everybody is. And I keep wondering why the meetings keep getting shut down when the people whose voices are most important to be heard in this community come here to be heard by their elected officials? And instead of ushering one out like you, I'm glad you ushered just one person out instead of silencing all these people like you've silenced Mark Huffington a million times. By the way, go ahead and put the Fourth of July fireworks on the Fourth of July. Give him a break for once in his life. Justice for Patrick. In 1955, in June 1955, Rosa Parks refused to give up her seat to a white person on a bus. Dr. King addressed the church. He said, we are not here advocating violence. We have overcome that. He said, returning hate for hate multiplies hate. Darkness cannot drive out darkness. Only light can do that. Hate cannot drive out hate. Only love can do that. We are not here advocating violence. The only weapon we have in our hands this evening is the right to protest. The weapon of protest. One of the greatest glories of democracy is the right to protest for right. If you will protest courageously and with dignity and love, when the history books are written in future generations, the historians will pause and have to say there lived a great people, a black people who injected new meaning and dignity into the veins of civilization. So we march in the tradition of the civil rights movement in this country for black freedom in this country. This is my community and we will be here explaining to you what is in our hearts every time you let us. Please stop shutting the meetings down. Please stop shutting the meetings down for swearing. Please stop shutting it down for them saying, mm and ah. You are here to listen to us. We are not here to be told what to do. I will not have you silence my black brothers and sisters again, Rosalynn Bliss, or I will tear this building apart with my hands. Dr. King said, the most potent weapon available to an oppressed people in the struggle of freedom is love. We are here with hearts of love and we hope that someday you will meet us with hearts of love. Because we met with Patrick Leoya, a good man, a good father, who lived with love in his heart in this city every day.
Thank you. All right, others who wish to be heard? All right, others still wish to be heard? Others wish to be heard?
Hello, once again, my name is Shannon Tanis and I'm from the first ward. I recently sent out an email to I recently sent out an email to the body, and I did not get a response from any of you. The only person I got engagement from was Kurt Repart by the Neighborhood Association that arranged a meeting, and it was just by coincidence. And I still had not gotten follow-through from him either from that communication. But I would like to thank the city comp controller for his due diligence in responding to my email and his eagerness to address the topics that I mentioned in the email regarding parking and the fraudulent errors charges that are being done. I have also spoke to him about many other fraudulent and fiduciary deficiencies across the board. Just to mention, one of the things that I recently came across that I sent him over the weekend was your independent auditor company, Plant and Moran, also does the taxes for the United Way of West Michigan. That is the fiduciary entity, and that is a conflict of interest. You cannot have them preparing when they are supposed to be checking in to make sure the checks and balances are correct. So, and I could sit here and go on for days with the deficiencies that you all are committing. But I am going to give the city comp controller plenty of time to research and look into these matters and engage properly, and we'll see where we go from there. I would implore the body to look at doing an executive session with me and other people of the city to address these fiduciary fraudulent issues. So, thank you very much, Shannon. Have a good evening.
Thank you. All right, others who wish to be heard? Hi, welcome.
Good afternoon. My name is Loretta Walton, and I live in Grand Rapids. I've worked, volunteered for the city of Grand Rapids, president of a neighborhood association for many years. I've worked with a lot of y'all. But I'm here tonight because of a Grand Rapids officer who pulled me over and said, asked me, was I blind? He said he had the street blocked, three cars. In fact, it was three cars that went down through there. And he was screaming and hollering, and he didn't realize who I was until he got my ID. And then his voice came down, but in the meantime, he kept going in his shirt. Well, he didn't realize I knew what that pattern was. And I told him finally, he says, "Well, you don't have to take a picture of my plate." I said, "I'm not taking a picture of the plate. I'm just getting the number of the car you're driving since I can't see your badge and your name." I said, "Unfortunately, sir, you are dealing with old-school matters." And I said, "I've been out here probably longer than you will ever be on the force." And I meant that. Now, Grand Rapids Police Department has been a good police department at times. I could take problems, I could go right down there and solve them with families and stuff. I was charged for traffic citation. They charged me a misdemeanor, which, that's what they wanted to do. And that's the reason why we have attorneys. But in the same time, I had to post $526, which wasn't a problem. My husband donated $10,000 to the Grand Rapids Police Department for the young kids to go for shopping and to camps. And like I said, I volunteered more than y'all worked. Even staff in my office didn't work as much as I did. But I can tell you this.
Thank you.
It's not over yet.
Yeah.
Okay, y'all have a good evening.
Thanks, Ms. Walton. Thank you. Thank you. Thanks for coming down. All right, others wish to be heard?
Hi, I'm Mark Al from Grand Rapids. I intentionally went last because of the hijinks that went on the last few meetings. And quite frankly, y'all owe me 12 minutes of public comment. Y'all are a disgrace. Y'all couldn't take the heat, so y'all got out the kitchen. It's not good. We have, look, I'm not with any protest group or no group like that, but y'all have GRPD out on the hunt for them. It's like with a few years ago in Sacramento, the Stefan Clark case, where there are protesters, where protesters were marching, crossing the bridge, they're met with bike patrols at one end and Dudley Do-Right's at the other. And they were pushing, and they were pushing and pushing and pushing and pushing and pushing, probably forcing, trying to go force them to get off the bridge to their deaths on Interstate The pattern is continuing. Something has to happen. Now it's time for you to close your beaks and get on your feet and do something to control GRPD, to control your behavior that is disgraceful. Because I'm telling you something right now. Yeah, Scher was charged. Charged. There's only halftime. There's only, there's a second half to go. And we don't know what's going to go on after that. So y'all better be ready. Because if not, the blood will be on your hands. You don't want that. Remove J. Edgar Hoover's name for the FBI building. Remove George Wallace's name for the town of Mobile, Alabama. Justice for Patrick Loyah. Justice for Judge Hatchett. And free Brittany Griner. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, um, I will not be sharing my name as Grand Rapids police, and citizens have continually harassed, arrested, created nonsense warrants to many of its citizens. And as a citizen of Grand Rapids, I don't want that to happen to me, so I'm not going to state my name. I live on the northeast side, though. That's where I pay taxes from. That's where I drive and volunteer here because we still got people that are, as I mentioned, without houses. I just went and delivered some food. We have people here that don't have food. I don't, I don't think it makes sense that we're going to increase our police budget when we have a set amount. Obviously, we have a problem with the budget. That brings me to my next point, which is, I'm a little concerned about us not having meetings. I'm a little concerned with certain people being demanded to provide their address? This is posted online. That's not safe. I'm not sure if we have rules about who has to get asked, who has to prove where they live, maybe do they need an ID? Tax returns, I don't know, 2010, 2011, 2012, as we see the harassment. So yes, I'm concerned about the meetings not happening. I'm concerned about them being canceled. Oh, we gotta close it right now because I don't like how it's going. Maybe we could hold a recess. Maybe we could come back tomorrow because we have a lot of work to do. So we can't do it if the meetings aren't happening. So, one, meetings, two, people getting harassed. Three, we'll just say, Patrick, you've heard enough. You know that that's on your plate. People have said it beautifully. I can't say it better. But that's on all of you. I hope, you obviously know that. Yeah, one more. We're in a pandemic still. I think it was like, what, a million people died in America or something from it? And we still don't have, why do we take away the options for our citizens that have disabilities, et cetera, et cetera? Why can't they contact and participate in these meetings? We have an easy technological solution. We've done it before. Other cities are doing it. I don't understand.
They don't care.
So anyways, that's really cheap. We could do that easy-peasy. I believe we've done it before. Also, this is such a high publicity problem. We see news articles, we see videos go viral. There's probably going to be a documentary made. You're all going to probably be in it. So like, the pressure is really, really on because it's going to be in all of your best interests for all of us to do something positive here because the opportunity's here and we want us to succeed.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Hi, my name is Tatiana. I live on the west side. I am a teacher, and I always frame everything through the lens of teaching. And so that's what I want to do for you tonight, some notes. One, this line creates this barrier between us, and that causes problems. Like, that already sends the message that we're completely separate, and I thought that we're not. Two, you know, when I was a first-year teacher, I operated out of fear sometimes with my students based on their reaction, based on their way of describing what was going on, or based on my perceived idea of them coming across aggressive. And I've really had to work on that as a teacher, to become better at that, because when I operate out of a space of fear, it's never good. I don't actually hear the other person. And my friends, I'm, I'm asking that you hear the people. Like, it might not be the way that you want. There might be swearing. There might be people raising their voice. But as a teacher, I know, and I think you're kind of in that role of like facilitator of what we would like. I think it's similar. As a teacher, if I silence somebody, if I silence one of my students before they have the chance to share whatever it is, in whatever form they want to share it, I haven't met them as a human being in that. I would think that everybody has that sense that we gotta care about people first, and if we, I think we need to check reacting out of fear. What happened to Donnie? That was a reaction out of fear. It was a reaction, maybe I'm perceiving this, and I would love to talk to somebody, honestly, I would love to talk to somebody because I'm very passionate about this.
Let her speak.
The problem is, like, you had people surround, he was surrounded right away, like, he was next in line, like, the assumptions we make about certain people, I've only been coming, sadly, since Patrick Loyah was murdered, but the assumptions, thank you, the assumptions that people have made are very clear to me in just coming to a couple meetings, that we're not hearing people, we're asking people to prove who they are and prove their validity to share, and that is really problematic. And as a teacher, that's something I do a lot of personal work to check in myself, and I would ask you to do the same. And I would love, I really would love to talk to somebody about that if possible. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Hello, I'm also not providing my name because I know GRPD goes and arrests activists for no reason at all. And I'm not trying to have that on my record. So, Grand Rapids Police Department continues to get more and more money while the unhoused population in our city continues to get less and less help and continues to get harassed by Grand Rapids police. I am out there at least once a week, oftentimes more, with fellow community members, with my fiancee, providing hot meals to these people, providing ice-cold water to these people. What are you doing?
Are you listening?
Yeah, I would, I would really love some eye contact. Thank you.
I am listening. I'm making notes.
Okay, thank you. We are going out with our wagons. We are getting coolers. We are buying reusable water bottles for people to refill. Providing hot meals, providing donations of food, hygiene products. Clothing, yes. Blankets, pillows, basic human necessities. And they continue to get things taken from them, their own belongings that they hardly have by police officers. Police officers continue to get money for new vehicles, for more ammunition, to basically just go murder other people while we, you know, yes, yes. Also, this just came to my mind as I was sitting here thinking, should bring it up to you guys. You know those barriers around the police department? Yes. Those are not in ADA compliance. They are blocking crosswalks. If I was in a wheelchair or anything and I was trying to go across the crosswalk there, I would not be able to cross there. They are blocking the crosswalk. That is against ADA laws, is against ADA compliance, and it needs to be immediately fixed. I would hope this week at some point I would come downtown and I would see that fixed, please.
Otherwise, it's a file complaint.
Yes. How is, how are my fellow community members who are in wheelchairs, who are on crutches, who are just trying to bring a stroller or a wagon to provide waters? How are we supposed to cross the street without lifting myself down the curb? I would love to see that done within the week. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to close that opportunity for public comment, and I'll turn to my colleagues, and I'll start down here with Commissioner Moody.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Every opportunity that we get, we get the chance to hear you. And as I said in the past, to a number of you, some of you who I've talked with are not here, I'm available to sit and talk with you, to sit and talk with you but not to be ridiculed or put down. We hear you, and we understand that you do have the right to protest. But the thing that I would appreciate the most is the utmost respect that you can give us that we can give you. That's what I would appreciate. Help me understand. You can meet me after this meeting. Help me understand.
All right, let him speak. It's his opportunity.
Sometimes when we're over talking one another, we choose to block each other out. I don't like the barricade there as much as the rest of you probably don't. But because of
Let him, let him speak.
Because of recent events that have taken place, and it has become a necessary event.
It is his opportunity to speak.
And
You didn't listen to us for two years? We're not listening to you.
Okay.
Good. Have a good night.
Don't fall asleep, Mr. Moody.
I won't. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. Just glad to be back at it, back here at City Hall. Thank you.
Commissioner O'Conner? Commissioner Repart?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Thank everybody for their, their passion that they brought into the room tonight and for their love of the community. It's great that love is appreciated by us. Just a couple things from today. I want to congratulate Amplified and Wada Cooper for their Lytech Awards last week. And some, another 100-plus units of affordable housing coming to town. And looking forward to taking the 60-some-odd properties, 69 now, in our land bank and repurposing those and activating them, both for affordable housing and homeownership. And so I was thankful that we were able to pass that policy today and thankful for the update that the chief gave at Public Safety today and the And the twenty-seventh is when he's gonna give us a really full update on, on all the things that he and Brandon have collected in the, in the wake of Patrick Leoya's death. And so we'll get to have a conversation about this next chapter and building together. And I look forward to hearing that and working together with you colleagues to, to figure out what our next steps are. Thanks.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Sassi.
Thank you, Mayor. It's been a while since we've had this opportunity. I would say, Tatiana, thank you for your comments. I feel like there was a connection to humanity that I hadn't felt in some time in this space. And I think that, you know, I think there's a lot of ways that people would like us to, to respond and to act. So sitting here and, and hearing people say, "You should do this. You should do that." One, I think it's an extreme point of privilege for some people to sit up here who don't look like me, who don't live in my shoes, who don't know what my life is, to tell me how I should act as the first Latina Commissioner. It often feels like I got put into this spot, and now it's my responsibility, along with my colleagues, to solve everything that has happened in the history of our criminal legal system and policing. I think the one thing that feels like has been accomplished over the two months has been a lack of humanity. This belief that there needs to be uniformity to have unity. And that if you don't care, if you don't do this, then you don't care about black lives. If you don't do that, you don't care that Patrick Leoya was killed on a street after two day, the two days before we were doing an expungement fair in the community. And so I, I found myself at different points, and probably many of you too. People who have asked you, "Is this worth it?" People who have asked you, "Why do you do this?" Family members begging you to quit because they can't stand seeing this happen to us. And I say that because it's not just what's happening in this chamber. But for individuals to go to our city manager's house, I, for me, that felt like more of a line that was crossed, to come into spaces, to leave bricks, and to say that things are being done peacefully. It's, it's, it hasn't felt that way. And I know that we have heard stories, and I have my own experiences of people who haven't had peaceful experiences by the police. So it doesn't have to be this either-or. But is it extremely getting to the point where you question, where myself has questioned, "Should I be here?" And not in this commission seat, but actually in this world? And that's what's been happening. And I think it's really important. And I've, I've, I've really tried to limit what I wanted to say. One, because these meetings have been adjourned. And mostly, I believe, and let me say, Mayor Bliss, I think you have done an excellent job with these meetings. And Commissioner Jones, I think you did an excellent job at these meetings, too. But to pit one another during this time just feels, just really not great. It also felt like the women on this body have particularly been, you know, we've been called out for the way our hair is, the ages that we are. We're all, we're all getting older every single day, trust me, I know. For blinking, for the way that our voice sounds. And so what I feel is that we are forgetting the, the whole reason that we're here is to create, try to create a more safe and just community and to make sure that what happened to Patrick Leoya never happens again. I would also say that what happens in these chambers is not a full reflection of how individuals feel. I have had people who have said they don't wanna come into these meetings. I've had people who have said and have, you know, had some discourse and communication with many of us. I've had people who we've met in coffee shops and neighborhood associations and other spaces. And I just, I just feel like this is just on my heart today, that I can no longer just kind of sit here. You probably saw me, like, rubbing my temples, like, we are not getting to the things that we need to be talking about because our meetings are being disrupted. And I do believe that because we have tried to make sure that people feel comfortable. I know there's somebody in the back, and I'm not gonna call out people's name. When they came up here a few meetings ago, people came up to them. I saw them touching this person. We should not have that happening, even if you disagree with what the person says. There have been so many things that have happened over these two months that have been extremely traumatizing that to come into this commission meeting after being gone for a month was both the pride of having this opportunity to serve the people of the second ward and the fear of, of, can we get through this meeting? And so maybe some of you might think I'm being a little too vulnerable, sharing things that I've only shared with some of my closest people in my life. But this is like, this is what is happening, and we're not gonna be able to get to these broader issues. So one, I wanna say that to you, Mayor Bliss, just publicly. I think you've, you've done what we have needed to do in these spaces, so thank you for your leadership during this time. City Manager, I'm sorry that you are serving the city and things like that are happening to you and your family. Colleagues, I'm sorry that this has happened to us and at different points, things being said to us, our ethnicity or race being called into question. We are diluting the legacy, the history of Patrick Leoya, and we are forgetting about all those who wanna work towards the reform and the justice that I believe should occur. I absolutely respect the prosecutor's decision in this matter. The accountability will be over, you know, probably at least a year to see what happens. I thank the police chief for engaging in community in different ways. I saw you talking to people before this meeting. I thank the city staff who have connected with us during this time, who have continued to support this work when people were yelling in these chambers, and you continue to do this. And so it just felt, it just felt like I had to have this space for this humanity because I feel like sometimes maybe people don't get to know us, don't get to sense of who we are. I'm just a forty-two-year-old, first-term Latina Commissioner who tried to run three other times for some stuff, never got it, and ended up getting the seat that I wanted during all of this. And I believe it's because I'm meant to be here, to work on these issues, to work on the things that we talked today. Participatory budgeting, creating new ways of doing work, creating new ways of engaging in community. I see, I am gonna, I'm gonna see, I call it a first-world resident who's here with their young son. Thank you for coming to this meeting. These are people that are connecting in community, are making sure that even at nine o'clock at night, they're showing up to, to be connected into those work. Thank you to all those who are engaged in participatory budgeting. Those have been working, we heard about this project with the Aspen Institute, about continuing to look at the collective impact and the reasons that violence happens in this community. I think it's important to note, as well as Patrick Leoya's killing, to note those who all died this past year and were killed by gun violence due to domestic violence and intimate partner violence, which continues to plague this city and other communities around the world. And lastly, I just, I just wanna say, you know, there have been other things that we've engaged in. We got to hear today from Public Safety, at Public Safety, from the chief, from Cure Violence, from Mr. Davis's office, and from the Safe Task Force. I don't want to say that we have done everything because I think that we are a city that has ambitious goals. I don't see a lot of cities that are doing what we're doing, that are engaging in this work. And I look forward to having a more positive discourse. And I'm okay. You can come up here and tell me you hate me. You can come up here and tell me you hate my ideas, that you're never gonna vote for me. What does not feel that it's working towards this common goal is to tell people that their hair is dumb, that their hair, you parted on the other side. To say that, you know, even was saying to Mayor Bliss, "Mayor Bliss, you're white." Yes, she is, and that is okay. That is not, those are not things that we should be cutting people down for. It takes away from the work. It takes away from this mutual activity we should be engaged in. And colleagues, that's what's on my heart tonight. And so thank you for the time. I'm glad we got through this meeting. And that's it for me tonight. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner, for being vulnerable and sharing your heart. And I know many of us share that with you, so thank you. City Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Just, we're in election season now. There will be an election on August.
Sir, I'm sorry, it's not an opportunity for the public to speak, so. If you stay afterwards, we'll make sure that somebody has a chance to connect with you.
Just a reminder that August 2 is going to be the, the primary election that's coming up. Absentee applications have gone out in the mail, and we've received thousands of them back. And we're preparing ballots this week to go out, probably early next week. Also, voters received in the, in the mail today a new voter information card that shows your new districts for US Congress, State House, State Senate, County Commission. So look for those cards. I, we know, I know they hit the, the mailboxes today. And just a reminder that it's an information card. It's not used for voting. It's just so you can find your, your districts. And you can also always go to michigan.gov/vote. You can, you can apply for absentee ballot on there and find out what district you're in because we had a lot of those changes of districts. And a lot of people don't realize that until they get to the, the voting booth on August 2, and they're seeing all kinds of different names and different districts that they haven't seen before. So please do your homework before elections. Once again, michigan.gov/vote. Thanks.
Thank you, City Clerk. An important election. Appreciate your work and all the election workers. City Attorney? City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, for your work today and your remarks this evening. And thank you, Commissioner Sassi, for being authentic in your remarks. And I, I too wish there was a better way to have an exchange at a night meeting. Unfortunately, that is not the current rule, but if you were paying attention earlier, during a day, we did brief during the committee of the whole about having deliberative dialogue in each ward. And Mr. Matthews, as well as other staff members, are working to make sure we can partner with entities like National League of Cities and WIMCAT to have that kind of facilitated discussion about, certainly the issues around public safety, but all the other issues around housing, economic security, and do it in a way in which we're not just strategic planning, but also continuing to hold ourselves accountable to strategic action. And so that will be a continued dialogue. I committed to bringing that conversation back on July the 12th and give an update, as well as have an update on our citizen survey, in which hundreds of residents were able to participate and provide comment about the way that services are delivered. And the city, I'm looking forward to that and that informing some of the other things that we need to continue to focus on this year. So I do wanna share my appreciation for the staff who has helped to prepare for not only this meeting, but all the work in between in delivering services to our residents. Appreciate the effort and also am excited about, we, we have been trying to be very, taking, taking things one step at a time with, ever since the, the killing of Patrick Leoya. And, you know, there's still things in which we are limited in, to talking about in that incident as there's still an ongoing criminal case. But we are looking forward to some of the, as Commissioner Repart said, some of the evaluation recommendations that our police chief, who's been here less than six months. It feels like he's been here six years, given all that's been going on. And giving him an opportunity to really provide his professional assessment. But also having a community lens in the assessment. And I think that's what we heard this morning when we talked about the work of the Aspen Institute and doing collective work around all the systems that impact the safety of our community. And so I, I, we have been through some real difficult times as a community, but I am very hopeful that we have better days ahead of us. And am still committed to that work and am encouraged by some of the comments I heard tonight to recommit to that work and even the things that was tough to hear. And I understand residents frustrations with some of the processes. And we, we have been talking about how do we create a more informed citizenry about how government works. It's not ideal, the way that things are, but I think we do have a responsibility to, to educate. But it cannot all happen on a Tuesday night. And so we have to figure out other ways to do that. And so I'm looking forward to those deliberative processes where we can discuss. And we've also talked about, it can, all the change that needs to happen will not happen at the local level. And I do look forward to those conversations where we invite some of our colleagues from county government, state government, as well as federal government to help us in some of our local, statewide, as well as national challenges. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, City Manager. With that, we're adjourned.